Good evening. Let me go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Rio Grande City Gruia Independent School District meeting to order. It is Wednesday, June 15th. It is 6:31 PM, June 15th, 2022. We are at the Ringled Elementary Cafeteria. I want to thank Mr. Garza for allowing us, for hosting us and the hospitality and allowing us to have this meeting here today. So, thank you and your staff. For purposes of determining a quorum, let me go ahead and take a roll call. Mr. Jay Peña.
I'm present, although remotely.
Jay Peña, present by zoom. Mr. Basilio de Villarreal Jr.
Present.
Mr. Noe Castillo.
Present.
Mr. Johnny Pope the fourth.
I'm present in person.
Mr. Arizabal Velazquez Jr.
I'm present.
And myself, Eddie Ramirez, present. The chairman is reflect that there is a quorum to proceed. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Castillo, will you help us with the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Section three, approval of minutes for the special board meeting held on May 13th, 2022, and the regular board meeting held on May 31st, 2022.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the special board meeting on May the 13th of the year 2022 and the regular board meeting of May the 31st of the year 2022.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion? All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, public forum. Do we have anything on public forum? Thank you all so much. Section five, reports and information. Item number one, report on response to intervention procedural manual RTI for the 2022-2023 school year. Mrs. Marisa Saldiva.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Superintendent Adolfo Peña, ladies and gentlemen. The response to intervention procedural manual is a live document that contains an overview of RTI, RTI components, tier overview guidelines, the RTI process, the assessment overview, district RTI flow chart, and district and campus RTI forms that will be utilized during the 2022-2023 school year. So, we did attach a copy of the manual. We do have a district committee. So, basically, this manual is an overview of RTI. We do use a universal screener with a CLI platform, which is state recommended, and it is free. We don't have to pay for it. So, we do screen pre-K through second grade, BOY, MOY, and ELY. So, we also have forms in here that we utilize. There's referral forms. There's parent forms that go out to the parents. And this document, documentation is placed in the CUME record in the AT-Risk folder. So, we do keep documentation on all the students that are being provided with RTI services.
Excuse my ignorance. What does RTI stand for?
Response to Intervention.
Okay. And specifically, what is that?
It's intervention that we provide to students who are struggling. So, basically, we give them the universal screener at the beginning of the school year. So, that's BOY assessment. And we look at data and based on data, and also, not just that, but also teacher input on observations in the classroom and the way the students are report, the way the students do in class as well. And basically, we get a group of students that need intervention. So, we do have intervention teachers on the campuses that service these students.
Okay. So, we do an assessment to find out where they're at?
Yes. So, they tier them from tier one, tier two, and tier three. So, we were servicing tier three this year, and we'll probably be doing the same this coming year. Those are the students that are struggling the most.
Okay. Tier one represents what? Tier two represents what?
So, tier one is basically the students that are being provided regular instruction in the classroom with their core curriculum. And tier two are students that are struggling, but not too far off. And tier three is they're really struggling. They're very below in all areas, and those are the students that we pick up to service.
Okay. Any further questions, comments, concerns? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Peña.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number two, update on students, staff highlights. I have Mr. Ariano Suna presenting.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Peña Superintendent, our distinguished board members and everybody here. As we came to the end of the school year, we're going to present the highlights for May, the month of May.
At Rio Grande City Gruia ISD, we aim for excellence in every aspect of school life. May was a sensational month for our students and staff. RGCGISD celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week with a two-day spectacular parade event where our sensational teachers showed off their school spirit and picked up a special treat from our superintendent and board of trustees. Our Career and Technical Education Department hosted a celebration for our career and technology students who earned their certificates in their CTE courses. We celebrated our sensational cafeteria staff in honor of National School Lunch Hero Day at our monthly board meeting. We hosted the annual Superintendent's Elementary Track Meet at Joe R. Sanchez Stadium, and our students had a blast showing off their newfound athletic skills. Rio Grande City Gruia ISD celebrated National Nurses Week with our sensational Health Services Department nurses and staff. The Texas Aces Program collaborated with the Starr County Health Coalition Partners to host a Mother's Day event at the Family and Community Engagement Center. KRGV News Channel 5 featured RGCGISD and our future location of our brand-new Gruia Middle School campus. The RGCGISD Career and Technical Education Department hosted a career fair at Rio Grande City High School and Gruia High School to teach our students about the different career opportunities available after they graduate. We hosted Decision Day at the Fort Ringled Auditorium, where our graduating seniors have the opportunity to announce where they will take their next steps into the world. RGCGISD held the annual Top Ten Breakfast to honor the top ten graduating seniors from each of our high schools. Our RGCGISD police officers received a special treat in recognition of National Police Week. Thank you for keeping all of our students and staff safe. We recognized all of our Campus Teachers of the Year, district retirees, and staff members who have been with the district for 25 to 40-plus years at the annual recognition banquet held at Versailles Event Center. We celebrated our Millionaire Readers at the End of Year Event hosted by the Library and Media Services Department, where all of our millionaire readers earned a brand-new Kindle Reader. RGCGISD hosted the annual Top Ten Percent Banquet to recognize the hard work our graduating seniors have put into their education. And we celebrated all of our students being promoted to high school and gave our best wishes to all of our high school seniors taking their next steps into the world. At Rio Grande City Gruia ISD, we strive to give youth, our students, and our staff an experience of a lifetime.
Item number three, report on construction projects. Again, Mr. Ariano Suna presenting.
This is the projects that we have going on, either in progress or have been completed.
Rio Grande City Gruia ISD is excited to share how some of our projects and renovations These projects and renovations range from items that were voted on in the bond election to other much-needed improvements in our district. We are continuing to improve the roofs at several of our schools and facilities, and we are excited to share that the Roque Guerra Junior Elementary Roof has been completed, and the roof construction at the 18-plus facility is underway and should be completed very soon. We are inching closer and closer to our brand-new Gruia Middle School campus. Currently, the land has been cleared, and the brush has been burned in preparation for the official groundbreaking. We are aware that roads around Fort Ringled are in need of improvements, and we are thrilled to announce the Fort Ringled paving project is set to begin very soon. Our maintenance staff has continued to clear the drains around Fort Ringled, which will allow rainwater to drain faster with less flooding around the area. Stay tuned for more updates on current and future projects, and remember, at RGCGISD, we are working for you, our students, and our staff to create an experience of a life.
Thank you again. That concludes, I believe, all the items and reports under section five, reports and information. Section six, recommending approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below, they're not called out, will be approved by consent. Consent agenda item number one, consider and take possible action on donations to Rio Grande City Gruia ISD. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item one?
Mr. President, I move that we approve consent agenda item number one, and item number two is presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion required on either item? There being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item number three, consider and take possible action on request from city of Rio Grande City for the use of district equipment for the Seventh Annual Freedom Fest on July 2nd, 2022. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item three?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine as presented in our board package.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items three to nine, but before I do so, let me, there's a correction on item eight, Mr. Varela. It should read, consider and take possible action to select the delivery contract method on football stadium parking lot and adjacent areas, paving project, and the repair of the broken sewage line.
Well, then, I would amend my motion to approve all those items with the caveat of the changes as specified by our board president, Eddie Ramirez.
There's a motion by, amended motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to the amended motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. Any discussion required on any of those particular items? There being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand.
I'll abstain from item number nine. I'd like to read three to eight.
Okay, so, items three, four, five, six, seven, and nine, the same sign, motion carries on those. Item eight with a vote of five to, with five votes in favor and one abstention, motion also passes. Item 10, discussion of the findings of fact on the application of Vega Solar Energy for an appraised value limitation on qualified property pursuant to chapter 313 of the Texas Property Tax Code. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item 10?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 10, 11, and 12 with a little bit of discussion.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. You may proceed with discussion, Mr. Varela.
I just real quickly, that I know that these people had committed that they were going to help us with the scholarships. Did they ever come through? Okay. And, okay, but we're going to get it, right?
And understanding it's, it was a sum for 10 years, so this is the first year of 10, but should be for a term of 10 years.
And that was, how much are they going to give us, man? 15, so over 10 years, $150,000 for scholarships, correct?
Any further questions or discussions? There being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 13, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Region One Education Service Center and RGCGISD to use school facilities for the purpose of establishing an adult education and leadership program for the 2022-2023 school year, Old Ringled Elementary School Building Number One. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item 13?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 13 through item 19. Do I have a second to that motion?
I have a second.
And I believe Mr. Castillo is going to stay on number 14.
Okay. So, second by Mr. Pope. Is there any discussion required before I call for the question?
I have, I have a little discussion.
Sure.
I noticed that in, in the purchasing of, we're buying chillers, correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Are we buying those chillers with budget money or Escher III money?
So, which one are you referring to?
There are a couple of chillers that are being bought in, that I read. I'm not going to go through them, but I saw a couple of chillers on two schools, I believe.
Yeah, the ones that we have are coming from $199. I know we have Real High that's from $199, and the rest are also from $199.
Okay, do, I thought that, that we, when we got Escher III money, they would cover air conditioning or not?
Uh, they do, but I know.
Okay, so, we just didn't prioritize his campuses. Okay, that's fine. So, we're going to pay for them, right?
Yes, sir. We need them, so we have to pay for them.
Okay, that's fine, sir.
Can I add something to it?
Yes, Mr. Peña.
Okay, it's $199, but it's coming from the lawsuit funds.
Okay.
So, they're designated for that campus.
Okay.
I also want to add that part of the expenditures was including the free supplies, right? A lot of the purchases made were for the free school supplies. Um, yes.
Quite a bit of it, right?
So, let me ask you a real quick, quick question. On these chillers, what kind of warranties are we getting? Do you know, Chris?
Uh, to be honest with you, I'm not sure. I don't know if I happen to know, Mr. Lopez, on those.
Okay.
I can find out.
Okay. The reason I tell you is the last thing we need is to get a one-year warranty, and then a year from now, we're having problems. Most air conditioners give you about a five-year warranty on them. Mr. Peña, we're going to approve this, just to make sure we have some decent amount of time with them. I just don't want to go three years or four years, and then we're having to spend a ton of money again to repair them, I think.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions or discussion? All right, there being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand.
I approve all except the number 14.
Okay, so, with exception, all, item 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19, it's same sign, motion carries. And item 14, five votes in favor, with Mr. Castillo abstaining, also passes. Item 20, consider and take possible action on a warning of the following bids. Bid number 22 dash 37, air condition parts catalog bid, bid 2238, plumbing parts catalog bid, bid 2239, electric parts catalog bid, RFP 2240 repairs and maintenance for air condition, RFP 2241 repairs and maintenance for plumbing and electrical work, RFP 2020 22 dash 43, property and liability insurance, and workers' compensation excess insurance. Is there any motion or any discussion on item 20?
I move that we approve item 20 as presented in our board package with a little bit of discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. You may proceed with discussion, Mr. Varela.
Yeah, real quickly, I know we have catalog bids. Does that mean that we're going to get quotes and try and get the best price for our district?
We, yes, sir. We do get the best quotes. So, we have our campuses departments go out and get the quotes with, of course, the best pricing.
Just make sure we have three quotes before we decide who the, the best value for our district is, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? There being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 21, consider and take possible action on 2022-2023 salary and stipend schedule. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item 21?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31, 32, and 33.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 21 through 33. Is there, is second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. Is there any discussion required on any of those items?
Mr. Just, Mr. Peña. Just so we could know, I know they're talking about salaries, but we, there is, I just want to make one thing clear today in this meeting, that you're proposing to give in the future, hopefully in the next meeting, people raises, not stipends, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, okay. So, in the next meeting, we should have some raises for all our employees, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct, in July.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there any further questions, comments, discussion? All right, there being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. That takes us to item 34, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Area Health Education Center of the Mid Rio Grande Border Area Health Education Center and RGCGISD. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item 34?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43.
Actually, yeah, there's a little discussion that we need on, can we cut it to 39, Mr. Varela?
How was I?
We need some discussion on 40 and 41. We need some extra discussion, so we can.
Okay, so, let me approve then items, let me approve items 34 through 40?
39.
Through 39.
Yes. All right, there's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 34 through 39. Is there a second to that motion?
I have a second to that motion.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. Is there any discussion required on any of those items? There being none, all those in favor so signify by, by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. And item 40, it's discussion, consideration, and possible action on creating and appointing a school safety committee under policy BDB local board internal organization, internal committees. And the reason I asked, Mr. Varela, not to include that one is because we have to go into a few details, that being, one of them being that the governor has issued requests, mandates, and those type of things because of the recent mass shootings and tragic events that have occurred. So, as, or pursuant to board policy, the board president can't authorize committee, especially one of this nature, of this magnitude. And I will, because of its seriousness and because of the priority that we feel it deserves, I'm going to ask that the entire board be appointed, number one. Number two, that Mr. Castillo be named the committee chairman. By far has the most law experience background of all the board members up here, and I think it'd be a great facet to have as part of the committee. Of course, Superintendent Adolfo Peña, and there will be others that will be added to the committee as we go along from other entities, as well as from the school. So, just, we had to name those details for purposes of going, proceeding further with it, and also for purposes of those that are going to the conference that will be held this coming week. Is that correct, Mr. Peña?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So, I make a motion on item 40 as stated by Mr. Eddie Ramirez and all the facets that he described there.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. On item 41, there's a little bit of clarity. It reads, discussion, consideration, and possible action to amend policy FNF local to read as follows. In order to maintain a safe and disciplined learning environment, the district reserves the right to subject students to require clear backpacks, clear bags, clear purses, and metal detector searches when entering a district campus and at off-campus, school-sponsored events. There's a lot of misconception out there that this includes teacher, staff, school personnel. It does not. That's number one. It specifically mentions students, and that's number one. Number two, from judging from immediate feedback that, that the superintendent got and board members as well, I think it's important that we add mesh on there because there are just some sensitive, delicate products that I'm sure students will have, and I think mesh must be allowed as well. So, that, that would be my recommendation and my motion, Mr. Varela, if you want to go ahead and make it, but that's, I think we need to add mesh to it.
Well, I'm going to make a motion on item 41 as described by Mr. Eddie Ramirez.
There's just it, all right? There's a motion. I'll second that one if you don't mind. All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 42, is discussion, consideration, and possible action to give notice and order school board election for November 8th, 2022. Mrs. Salazar, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, board members, members of the public. This is a state requirement that before we have an election, we have an election coming up November the 8th, that the board give notice to the public. So, this is the resolution notice, and we're also including the order in here for the November 8th election. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things, and then after it's signed by all board members, we'll, we will publish it on our webpage, and we'll advertise it. We'll also send a copy to the elections officials with the county. This year, we're not, we're not, we don't have a contract with the county, so we're going to have our, we're going to conduct our own elections, except for Election Day, we will be with the county, but separate. The first thing is, we have four positions coming up November 8th. The first position is place five. It's a two-year position. Place three, six, and seven are four-year positions, so that's what the notice says. I'm just going to highlight this real quick. If anybody wants to be placed on the ballot for the November 8th, they can start on July 23rd, the, at the superintendent's office, from 8 to 12. And the last day to sign up to, to run for board member is Monday, August 22nd at 5:00 PM. So, those are the important dates. The polling places are going to be from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Election Day. They will be at all precincts that, that people are normally assigned to. And, and the reason I say that is, everyone's going to have to look at their precincts because the county adopted four more precincts. Last year, there was only 10, now there's 14. Three of those new precincts fall within the RGCGISD jurisdiction, so whoever is going to go vote, make sure that you go to the correct precinct. And again, that's something that the county does, not the school district, but they are, they are listed, I'm not going to pour everybody, but they are listed, the precinct 1, 2, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 10, 12, 13, and 14. So, 12, 13, and 14 are new precincts in, in the county, but they're all under RGCCISD. The other dates that I think are important is October 24th, 2022, is when early voting starts, and it ends on November the 4th, 2022 also. And I've listed all, we are going to have four locations. We're going to have the, the early voting are going to be separate locations. It's going to be the Fort Ringled, the old cafeteria. It'll be open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. La Unión Elementary from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Veterans Middle School from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Starr County Courthouse from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Again, that, that's state law. We're, we're following the same hours that state law requires us to do, and we're going to reach out to the county and offer these same positions. If the county wants to conduct their early voting, we're going to offer those places for them to also use them for, for purposes of early voting. There's also some information here, if you want to, if you have, if you're in the military or if you want to send a mail by, by ballot, the clerk right now, as of today, has been designated as superintendent, Mr. Adolfo Peña, or his designee. So, he, he may at some point change that, and we will advise it, the, we'll advise the public. So, this, this is a document that I'm, that we're required to, to adopt as a board, and all board members will sign on it. And again, we're going to post this online once it's signed, and if Mr. Peña is going to be here either tomorrow or the next day, then we'll wait till Mr. Peña is in to sign the document. But that's my recommendation. We've, we're going to go ahead and follow state law. I mean, it's basically, these, these are, this format is required for state law. So, basically, what we're telling the public is, we're having an election November the 8th, and it gives all the dates when you can sign up, and also when early voting starts and when early voting ends. And of course, the big date is November the 8th, 2022, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Any further discussion or questions for Mrs. Salazar? There being none, all those in favor so signify, I'm sorry, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve item 42 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Castillo. All, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 43, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Starr County Sheriff's Office and the City of Far EMS to host a class titled Stop the Bleed at H2 Elementary. Do we have a motion or any discussion on item 43?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 43 as presented in our board package.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion required? There being none, all those in favor so signify by, by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, before we go to executive session, let me just say one thing. You know, on the Uvalde shootings, a lot of kids lost their lives and things of that nature. It's a sad situation, but I also want to say, Rio Grande, I think, put a, and I don't know if you've passed by the fort, there's a little memorial to them, which is real, real nice. Sometimes we don't realize, you know, youth, the youth of today, the future of tomorrow, how they're just taken. So, I'm glad that we're trying to institute all these safety measures because you say it can't happen here. Well, Uvalde, it reminds me a lot of Rio Grande City.
And that's what we're trying to prevent, yeah. All right, the board will convene executive closed sessions in accordance with the Texas All right, the board will convene in executive closed sessions in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one point zero-seven-one through five-five-one point zero-seven-six and five-five-one point zero-eight-two through five-five-one point zero-eight-four. The time is seven oh one P.M. All right, we're reconvening back in open session, Section Eight, it is eight nineteen P.M. Do I have a motion on Item Eight?
Mr. President, I move that we move on Item Eight as discussed in the executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Do I have a motion on Item B?
Mr. President, I move that we approve Item B as, as discussed in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
No second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Uh, I will move that we approve Item C as discussed in executive session. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand?
Mr. President, let, let the record show that I am abstaining in this, in this vote on Item C.
Okay, motion passes with five votes in favor and one abstention by Mr. Varela. Do I have a motion on Item D?
Mr. President, I move that we approve a recommendation for Principal at Ringo Elementary. And Mr. Peña, do you want to announce, would you?
Yes, sir, we recommend Javier Garza as Principal for Ringo Elementary School.
Who's Javier Garza, sir?
Congratulations, Mr. Varela.
Sir, I'm just...
It's not official yet, I had to...
The only thing I heard about Ringo Elementary did a great job. I only heard a lot of good things about you over here. Keep up the good work. Remember, you're just getting going, so we expect better things in the future.
There was a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by, I would say, Mr. Velazquez, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries. Do I have a motion on Item E?
Mr. President, I move that we approve Item E as discussed in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand? Same sign, motion carries, and that individual is Mr. Mike Guerrero? Oh, you have, thank you. I'm sorry, okay. So you're, you're not, you're opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's five votes in favor and one against by Mr. Velazquez. Motion passes, that individual?
Yes, sir. Principal for Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary is Mike Guerrero.
Do I have a motion on Item F?
Mr. President, I move that we move, uh, that we pass Item F with the caveat of effective June seventeenth on this particular item, correct, Mr. Varela?
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
I have a second motion.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand?
Abstaining.
With a vote of five in favor, one abstention by Mr. Velazquez, the motion passes. Item G and H require no action, so the meeting is hereby adjourned, and it is eight twenty-two P.M. Thank you all so very much.